Whitney Hall, after the meeting, or somebody wants to bring it up on their new business, that's fine, but this is the Enfield Planning Board, it's December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. I am calling this meeting to order at six thirty-one. We are in the DPW conference room, and also we are on the Teams platform, although no guests have joined as of this time. Members present tonight, starting with Linda.
Linda Jones.
Eric Russell.
Dan Tiley.
I'm David Fracht.
Brad Rich.
Tim Jennings.
Kurt Carhartt.
Staff member.
Rob Taylor.
Okay. Nobody from the public, so we will not have any public comments. No hearings, no conceptuals, and Select Board report.
There, alright. Our last meeting was sort of a business-as-usual type meeting. We got another highway block grant for forty grand. Shed Street, the first half of the demolition is done, so there should only be one, there's only one building left there, and the other half of that will be done next year. The Marsh Wells, they're doing pump tests now, I guess, for the new wells. We have a new cemetery trustee, but it was really a business-as-usual type meeting, the last one, so.
Any questions for Eric? Okay. Legislative report, we are still getting ready for the onslaught of eight-hundred-plus bills come January third. My committee has something over forty that we're gonna have to deal with, so that's about it. Tomorrow, I'm going to a training session on commissions and study groups and all those things that are not real committees, so I'll be learning about that, followed by the speaker's Christmas party, followed by something else, which, you know, if anybody has any energy, they will show up, followed by Christmas shopping. Rob, your report.
Okay.
I have a question for you on legislative.
Yes.
That relates to our board, and that has to do with the church that is being proposed for Greensboro Road in Hanover, and that there is now a state RSA, that churches don't have to abide by town regulations.
I did, I did see that in Valley News, and it's not that they don't have to abide a hundred percent, but the factors that a planning board can consider are greatly reduced.
But are they reduced to the point that they don't have to honor setbacks and driveway rules and, and heights and?
I don't know, because I have not read the legislation. It's, well, there, on a sort of related issue, there's a bill that we're going to be dealing with, having to do with adding a different or another religious group, and I wanna say it's either the Lutherans or the Methodists, but I could be totally wrong, to those groups of religious exemptions from local tax. And in thinking about that last night, I kind of came to the conclusion that a line has to be drawn somewhere, because, you know, what if John Doe, who got his Doctor of Divinity off of a matchbook cover, decides to start a church in his town?
He did that in Grafton, you know.
I did not know that, but.
What was the thinking behind giving less stringent rules to follow for churches?
I, I don't know.
I think there was some event somewhere that was just outside the box, and people have checked in for the wrong reasons, so. They told a story, but I didn't feel like they told a complete story.
I'll have to see if I can find the RSA, and when I do, I'll.
I'd like to understand the.
So would I.
Why?
So would I.
That's clearly something that our consultant will have to advise us on.
Right? Yeah.
Section in here, I think, about that.
We've experienced a little bit of that, we, there's a.
Westcott Road.
Westcott Road, is it?
Living Waters.
It was prior to the RSA, though.
That I, but Living Waters, yes.
I mean, the story I heard, it was, when it first got passed, it was a plan like posting somebody put out, and it really didn't generate a lot of comment, but it was, the impression I got, it was a, basically, a national Republican right-wing group that was pushing church right, freedom of church, or just freedom of rights, and a church rights was one of the things that they were pushing, and it was like this blanket wording that went to all the different state legislators, and different states adopted it, and New Hampshire was one of them.
Well, I would certainly be in favor of revisiting that.
And we can't overrule a state, though, right?
No, we can't.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no.
But, you know, if, if we.
Be good to understand it.
If legislature revisits it and decides to repeal it, then we go back to status quo. Interestingly, on a similar line, I got, well, a representative from somewhere in southwest New Hampshire sent an email to the, all the members of the municipal and county government committee, inquiring for, on behalf of a constituent, who is concerned that a foundation was going to open a museum along with eight complete living units, rolling units, and the museum was only gonna be open four or five days a month, and the living suites, which, you know, sound like they're pretty small, but contain their own sanitary facilities, cooking facilities, bedroom, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know how big, were going to be used to, quote, "offset the expenses of the museum." And this particular constituent was interested in the, what the state regulations had to say about that. I did respond last night to the representative to the effect that a lot of this is local zoning, so look at your local zoning. It gave her some, you know, things to look at, and we'll see where that goes.
I may have a brief issue that came up that Mr. Representative Fracht maybe have an opportunity to deal with, but I was hoping if, actually, there's a couple of us interested in a piece of property in Canaan that could be developed for, for housing, and it's owned by a New Hampshire DOT. It's, it bucks the rail trail, it's, I won't even bother telling you where it is, but anyway, it's about seven acres, and a pretty little piece of land. This is the interesting dilemma we ran into, so you go to the New Hampshire DOT website, and you find the property management section, and so to inquire about this piece of land to be used for whatever, you have to pay a five-hundred-dollar fee to review the records of the property and determine if it's something that they might be interested in selling in their surplus. What struck me about that was the roadblock that presents for a small developer or a town that's interested in a parcel like that. It probably has absolutely no benefit whatsoever to DOT. They're probably surprised they own it, kind of thing. And it goes to that issue we've talked about before, with DOT being unresponsive to towns and communities that try to develop land. So what really seems to, would have made sense is that they had rules that require if, if an inquiry is made about a piece of property, you gotta respond within a certain length of time, and get rid of the five-hundred-dollar fee, and et cetera, et cetera, to make it easier for you.
I know that there is a bill that will be discussed this twenty-twenty-four session that somehow relates DOT and their issues with the ability to develop land for housing. I have yet to actually go in and read the text of it, but I, I will see if your concern is something that can be appropriately added as an amendment to that bill. Since, you know, we're talking about land that could be used for housing, it, you know, off the top of my head, it sounds like it would be an appropriate amendment, so I will keep that in mind, and when the time comes, I don't know what committee is going to be dealing with it, but I'd be happy to propose an amendment that, you know, just makes it easier to cut through that bureaucracy.
What is the issue with DOT? Is it primarily staffing, or is it management failure?
I do not know. Rob, do you have any opinion?
I think it's a combination of the two.
Well, it took Susan Brown two years to get ten feet on the front of her property down on.
Yeah.
Depots.
She came to this, right?
It took her two years to go through DOT's process to get ten feet added to. And that, and her calling every time.
Then how long did it take Drew Kelliver to get the land that he's building those apartments?
Years.
Right, that was, I mean, that was a slightly big issue, because they, because they eased met, um, for issues, the setback requirements, so, I mean, he had multiple issues.
Yeah, right, but still, I mean, how many years did it take him?
Right, right, I, I agree.
When you, when you start mentioning years, it's wrong.
Right, something's wrong, yeah.
It boils down to inertia and incentives.
Right, yes.
Right, they have no incentive, nothing happens for them, no matter what, if they do.
Right, right. Well, but someone at DOT is boss.
But, no, no, but, but DOT itself, right, has no incentive, like, that's not within their, like, dealing with public requests is not in their core, what they've been told to do, they've been told to plow roads, right, so anything else is a distraction, so it's, it's a management thing, but it's not even necessarily a management thing within DOT, it's a, it's a level about that, because they have not been told that that's important to them.
They probably don't even, people that think that it's serious decisions, probably don't even know it's an issue.
Right, right.
Well, shame on them.
Yeah.
Because if you make it hard for them, people don't try to do it.
But we, the town did manage after several years to get the property for Lakeside Park, so.
Right, yeah, right.
It was.
Oh, was that DOT land?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, you use the word years.
Yeah.
Right. DOT bucked a motel property in order to orchestrate the bridge replacement, and when that was done, that, that land was surplus.
And there were, there were two pieces there.
Right.
And related to town, also, the town has started the inquiry process for our, the depot to be, is town-owned building, a state-owned land, so we've started the inquiry process already around that.
I'm curious, did the town have to pay a five-hundred-dollar fee to?
I do not know.
That, that would be interesting.
I think we'll have to come up with an assessment.
Yeah, I, I don't know what, I, I just know that that's already started, because with the construction of the buildings, we're gonna have to make a decision about that.
Do you imagine that being your job?
In one former.
DOT to get that done?
Oh, that's a job. Yeah, I think that actually caused that.
Oh, poor man.
It's considerably better than when the railroad owned the land. Oh, goodness, that was impossible.
Anyways, we, we digress.
But the town owns the depot.
We own the building, we own the building.
But not the land.
Not the land, it's on, and the state's not gonna clean it up, so it will end up, if we were to take that, be our problem.
Right, and that's part of what they've started, is figuring out, because you gotta do the environmental assessment, there's, there's a lot of information you just have to have in order to make a decision, so that will be a years-long process.
Yeah.
I think it's safe to say.
Rob, do you want to give your report?
Sure. Since we last met on the twenty-ninth of November, I attended the New Hampshire Planners' Annual Meeting on the first, that was excellent, they had a presentation from the Office of Planning and Development on pending legislation that will impact us, there is a couple of things that are pertinent to us, there's, there is a legislative piece that will go to DOT to basically make them, force their hand a little bit faster, kind of what they've done to us, they've sort of said to planning and zoning, certain situations, if you don't move, then there's gonna be automatic approval, and so that's kind of what the legislation that we were updated on at that meeting is, is proposed to sort of force DOT to get a little more proactive and a little more responsive to what is, is happening out there, because I, I've been preaching that, you know, as we've seen with some developers here, it's really not us.
Shut them down.
We're, we're ready to work with.
No.
It's the uncertainty of the state, and it's, that's the big thing, it's, it's not even just the fact that you have to deal with the state, it's just, the state really just hasn't, has no motivation to give you an answer, it's like, eh, right, and it's always, well, we'll push it up further up the channel to Concord or whatever, so you're dealing with the district office in, in Enfield, there's actually a DOT shop right at their exit sixteen, so you can deal with them to some extent, but they can kind of say, ah, no.
Little guy in there in chairs, asleep at the, on the wall.
So, that was one of the pieces. There is a proposal to copy us with statewide ADU double, like what we've done here, sort of, kind of what happened the first go-around is that some of the Upper Valley towns and a few others around the state came up with the ADU legalization, authorization through zoning, and then the state sort of seized on it and said, we'll make this a statewide zoning essentially, and I think, you know, there are obviously housing, 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 this, it's, it's to the point now where I think everybody's sort of starting to see there's like a little bit of housing fatigue that people are like, that's all we ever talk about. So actually, at this conference that I went to with the New Hampshire Planners, they actually had two sessions after lunch, the first one was, both of them were fascinating, the first one was on AI, and an attorney from a big firm down in Manchester specializes in AI, and it's obviously something that, if you haven't seen or heard or talked about this yet, you will be, because this is really coming along strong, you can go right now, I mean, I could show you, if you had time, if you went to ChatGPT, which is one of the four or five big players in the, in the space of AI, you could say, write me a zoning ordinance, it'll, it'll just feed it to you, write me a short-term rental policy, it'll do it. So there's, it presents all kinds of, you know, ethics.
You can also give keywords and phrases.
Yes.
And direct it where you want it to go.
Yeah, it has, there's a graphic component, like, give me a new logo for my business.
You can do poetry, poetry stories.
Yeah, he was demo, demoing it for us in front of us, he's like, shh, let me throw out, you know, I want a, a logo in the style of Van Gogh for my plumbing business, there it is, because actually, some of them, some of them are terrible, but some of them are actually pretty decent, and, I mean, we're in the infancy of this technology, and it's just gonna become more and more and more of an issue. He talked about attorneys that are using it for writing briefs and.
And all the content providers, artists and music and everybody else, they're up in arms, because that's how, that's how the AI learns, is from historical sampling of all of this stuff.
Yeah, well, I, I read the other day that if you ask AI to write a scholarly paper on a certain topic, including footnotes with references, it can't find any references, it just makes them up.
Yeah, that's what's happened in the legal profession, is you ask it to do a brief, and it's citing cases that don't exist. Yeah, the lawyer that gave our presentation, he cited, it's happened in, in certain communities, in South America, there's been a few cases where they literally, that's where they, they created ordinances, and nobody, now, you gotta, you gotta be real careful, because it's, it's very much unethical to sort of present it as your work, you know, so, it's obviously gonna become, and, and he said it's gonna affect us, he was specifically tailoring his speech to planners, and it's definitely gonna be coming along, he says, you know, has, has real incredible power, that it can be used efficiently if, if we need it, but it's also got, you know, huge downsides, too, as we've seen with education and legal stuff, so.
It can grade papers, too.
Yeah.
It grades papers.
Oh, my gosh.
They're getting to the, in college now, that they do a lot of oral examination, because if you give it, kids an assignment, they take it home, they just push it through AI, ChatGPT, to write the term papers, and so, it, that's something to keep our eyes on, I'm sure it'll come to a pass that we're harnessing that to some extent for what we do here in municipal, certainly in the business world, it's gonna be huge.
Don't you ask it to write us a zoning ordinance?
Exactly.
Simple.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, you can go online and feed in our current zoning ordinance, and ask for an update.
I know the city manager, or the town manager, when he went to the ICMA Conference, which is the big city managers' conference down in Texas, that was a big part of their discussions, and he, when he came back, he was demoing it for us at one of our staff meetings, and it's, it's incredible, and again, we, you gotta think about, we are just on the very tip of that, in, in the next hundred years, it's gonna be just massive, it's scary, too, if you've ever seen the Terminator, it's, that's not that far off, I don't think, so.
But I'm hoping for medical diagnoses.
Oh, yes, it's doing it.
Very.
They're, they're working on that, absolutely.
It's gonna solve.
My, my cardiologist says that, you know, every time I have an EKG, it's machine read.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Did you ask him if he'd adjusted his feet downward, so that, because he didn't have to look at it?
I don't know.
You should probably give that a thought.
Some, some, some human looks at it and signs, signs off on it, but basically, you know, if, if a machine can generate the report, and the doc can look at the report, and then look back at the tracing, he can say, yep, that's right, or no, that's not right, I've seen a couple of things on TV about how AI is being used to read mammograms, and is finding lots of things that doctors would not pick up in terms of early detection.
What else you got, Rob?
He's got some good stuff, alright, what else you got there?
Further, at that planners' conference, they, they also, very timely, had DES on-site talk about water quality, as obviously a hot topic for Enfield, very much applicable to us, they started out talking about salt, usage of salt, which has obviously created some of the problems that we're dealing with right now, the solidity of all New Hampshire's surface waters is at issue, they talked a lot about, they have a big thing going on on the private side about salt usage, where they've actually created legislation, the state of New Hampshire passed, and it's actually kind of a neat pioneering rule, that if you are a contractor that plows snow, you can now be salt-certified by the state of New Hampshire, and if you get certified for that through this program with the state, it gives you blanket immunity against slip-and-fall type of stuff, and there's already been a Supreme Court case that tested it, and the person who's being sued, woman had slipped in the parking lot, broke her leg, she was trying to sue the contractor that was responsible for plowing and sanding, because they were salt-certified through the state program, the immunity kicked in, and the Supreme Court upheld the immunity for that, they're actually gonna replicate that program for municipality as well, so we're looking forward to that. Our new highway supervisor came to us from town of Hanover, and previously was at Claremont, is very much on top of that, it's a very, it's a very important thing, especially because we've got all this water, you know, there's lots of surface water here and in, lakes and streams and rivers and wetlands, and so they're gonna be pushing that same thing out to us, and so that'll be important, and then they were talking about the cyanobacteria stuff that, and I was encouraging them on the state level to talk about some of the things that we've talked about around this table, we talked about encouraging or mandating septic system pumping, limiting fertilizer use in the vicinity of the water surfaces, you know, only allowing you to do it if you've had a soil analysis and there's deficient nutrients, that you can apply, you know, certain nutrients, because what's happening is homeowners are just going to get ten, ten, ten at Home Depot and just throwing it down on their lawn, may not have needed ten, 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 because soil's actually got plenty of magnesium.
Well, there's really no need to do it.
And that's something that I would encourage you guys as we go forward, especially for the waterfront.
Plenty of natural fertilizers, if you're really crazy and you want, you know, Gulf course grass right up to the water.
Yeah, did, did they address what, what regulation, regulatory authority would best address those issues, or for properties, is it, is it a zoning ordinance? Is it?
Is it DES?
There's gotta be DES.
Gotta be DES.
Well, DES, but, you know, there's a case, I mean, Son of P's got it, and there's zoning ordinance for pumping septic systems, if you live on the lake, every three years you have to pump your septic system, so that may be something we can say.
To me, that's a slam dunk, I can't imagine anybody not supporting that.
Kind of enforce it, though.
I think it's gonna have to be something like what we do here in the town, it's the same thing as registering dogs, every dog in town of Enfield has to be, have that little tag on, and we have to chase, we have to chase, and we have to chase, literally, we get the police department, go, hey, is Fido still alive? You haven't come and registered him for this year, he's gotta have his rabies vaccine, and you have to have him registered, if you don't, we're hitting you with a fine right now, so there's gonna be some of that, I think, that we'll have to, we'll have to build in, there's gonna be, just like building permits and other stuff that we do, it would have to be, like, you have to come in and prove that you pumped it, where's your receipt for the pumping?
Right.
Let's see it, if you haven't, if you haven't done it, we, we haven't received it, here's your fine, you know?
You gotta do it.
So, that's the kind of stuff, and as I said, I'm encouraging, because this, this is the whole state, we don't, we shouldn't all be doing this on a little piecemeal basis, the state needs to get on top of it if it has to, and, and they already regulate for the design and the install.
And, and the design and install is tough.
Yeah.
I mean, you really, really regulate, and the next step is, come on, pump your tank every three years, two hundred bucks or whatever.
But it's, 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 we've reached critical mass in, in, in New Hampshire, and really in the whole country, because of years and years of neglect, and, and all these big rain events are just creating more runoff into the, into the lakes, as we saw this summer for, for us, so that was a great thing that I went to, and then, secondly, David and I attended, last week, we went to St. Anselm College in Manchester, it was the Center on Ethics in Society, hosted their sixth annual Housing We Need Symposium, a roundtable, one or the other, and so we went to that, they had invited me to give a quick, they had like a lightning round, and it was sort of signs of hope in the housing industry, and they had various presenters, municipal, private business, developers, that got up and talked about different things that are sort of signs of hope in the housing side. I got up and talked about our two ADUs, I talked about our increase in density in the R1, we talked about our expansion of sewer infrastructure, that was kind of my slant, was the intersection of housing and water quality, which, you know, from my week before, thing, thing I was just talking about, I think was very timely, and that everybody was kind of nodding their head, yeah, 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 that's obviously stuff that we're, and, you know, I was proud to talk about, I mean, when I got the numbers from Jim for my little presentation, we've, we've, in the last fifteen years, we've added almost two miles of sewer in Enfield, that includes the two thousand and twelve installation of sewer and water on Route Four from basically Anderson Hill all the way down to the canyon line, and it includes the extension on four A that picked up the lake view, so that's, I mean, that, that's substantial, and something that we can be proud of, but I think there's more of that in the future, there's, there's more sewer to be installed. There's there's more sewer to be installed. It's obviously gonna be largely depending on if we can get some federal support and that kind of stuff. But um that conference was excellent. Um there was uh a couple of keynote speakers and it's also, it's it's the same place as the Center for Politics. So it was kind of a neat venue that David and I got to check out, but uh there was a lot, but it was kind of a who's who in New Hampshire on. The the people that we had seen that are doing the tiny home development, she was one of the people that got up and talked about their tiny home uh concept in Dover and uh there was a neat uh doctor from Harvard who's uh very much involved in the homeless situation in the Boston area. He he was interviewed by Laura Canoe and uh they had a book that was written about him. It was kind of interesting. You had a question?
Yeah, I'm just curious, did they mention at all any of your conferences why the homes are not being built? I mean, what's preventing the builders, the developers from building?
Well, so at the table, we we sort of, each table sort of had a little breakout sessions and we talked about that. At my table, it was sort of, this is a perfect storm, you know, there's there's the stuff that we we've done on the zoning side has been effective at sort of limiting, and that's why we originally started with zoning, was to limit development and slow it down. And some towns had growth moratoriums and that kind of stuff. That has been successful. But couple that with the increasing regulatory landscape of DES and uh DOT and all these other things.
Right.
That's a big one. We talked about labor shortage, inflation of products. I I I wrote sort of a thesis document for some, I can't remember what it was for. But I talked about, you know, at one point in Enfield, we had six permitted gravel pits for down to one. Neither that one's empty. I mean, there's not a lot of material left in that. And so those aggregate materials are getting so much more expensive. We have a shortage of CDL drivers to bring the materials to us. Concrete, if you ordered concrete right now, it would take you two months to get a delivery of concrete because they don't have drivers.
I lost three drivers last week in one week.
There you go.
Out of fifteen.
Yeah. So it's, like I said, I I call it the perfect storm. There's so many different things. One of the big ones that we talked about in our roundtable that I was at, uh tax policy. And we literally have a punitive tax system for housing. If you build a nice house, you're gonna get just absolutely whaled on by property tenants, which is what New Hampshire has. Uh we talked about current use. Current use encourages people to sit on the great swathes of land and have no.
Problem, I mean, the lack of supply, interest rates, lack of workers, I can see. And I just, that's, I agree, fully accept and agree with.
Yep.
But when you look at the housing that was being, the housing boom that happened prior to the two thousand eight crash.
Yeah.
Um people were being built.
Yeah.
And current use was there. Zoning was still pretty much the same.
Yeah.
Maybe DES regulations were a little bit easier.
Yeah.
I mean, always lakefront property problem. I mean, things have changed there. But that doesn't, anything past a hundred feet from the lake, you're still on. DES doesn't kick in. Childs streams, but what?
Were being built here.
They weren't being built here, exactly. They were, they were being built in the cities.
The easy land has already been grabbed up.
Does it have a valley?
Lack of good, easy land.
There's not Enfield.
Right.
Well, right now, though, the, with all the building right by the hospital there and those huge units. All the tradesmen, they they don't wanna go out and fight for every little job. They'd rather just go to work and get paid. I mean, they've got years of work ahead of them.
Yep.
I hear to have my house painted, I'd have to pay a deposit and get in line for three years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The record high uh interest rates right now, I think are working counter. It's a it's a C.
They're just going up from zero.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, zoning, zoning is still a killer.
Yeah, zoning is still a killer.
I'm sorry, but there was a plan, I'll give you an example. There was a plan in Concord last week, you know where the CVS is, used to be? About a block down from the State House?
Yes.
Somebody wanted to put up an eight-story building there. It was gonna be eighty-eight feet high. Within three blocks on that side of Main Street, the max is eighty feet. Do you know why? Because if it's above eighty feet, the reasoning was, you can't see the State House dome. So they rejected it saying because you wouldn't be able to see the State House dome for one point two seconds. We're not gonna approve it. And it was going to be retail on the first floor, commercial second floor. Four stories of housing and a restaurant on the top.
Yeah.
And it was denied because of the eighty-eight foot, that somebody wasn't, they were not gonna be able to see the State House dome for one point two seconds while driving on ninety-three.
So again, the state, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand.
So and that's the zoning.
Um a couple, couple of things to finish up.
Two hundred and forty units of housing.
Yeah. Couple of things to finish up my presentation. Um the, and Eric sort of alluded to. We have, we have moved Whitney Hall into uh Los Allo. That happened last week and we're still sort of, you know, settling in over there. That was a pretty major project, as you might imagine, because we moved everything out of Whitney Hall, all the library books, all the records, vital records, histories, all, everything. And uh we had to prepare Los Allo with getting everything out of there and cleaning it and uh lots of mouse nests. They actually put a new roof on in the last two days on that building. Um and we pulled cable out for computer IT. Um and uh they hired a company to do the actual trucking moving. And they took about, I don't know, twenty trips. It was a lot of, a lot of loads. And so they're settled in over there pretty well. You know, some of the pickups, you know, like IP addresses of computers change. So like, we use systems here that need to look at server down there. And there was a little bit of that, SimQuest helped us navigate that, but it's, they've got it set up, so they've, they're uh kind of spread out. It's a big space for them. And it's lots and lots of glass. So there's beautiful views that everybody has. But they've learned that the beautiful views have a consequences that they all set their desks up against the windows.
Yeah.
So there's all this backlight pouring in, so they like to walk, so read their computer monitors, they have to kind of. And Elisa had a hat on the other day. They've ordered lots of static cling window film to try to darken. But that's gone pretty well. And uh so uh we're happy to be sort of beyond that. I think there was a lot of stress in Whitney Hall about that, particularly on the town clerk's side because, you know, people are coming in, like, wanna register my car, why can't I do it? So uh they are back in in business there with uh clerk works and being able to do all that kind of stuff. And I dropped in a couple of times to see him and help him and uh there's a little bit of carpentry here or there. The libraries, they take a little bit longer to get ready. Their plan is to be open after the first of the year, so they'll take them up to December to sort of spread out. They're gonna be in what was the gift shop, the stone building to the left. And everything else is on the the old cafeteria movie theater on the right. So that is going on. Um I can give you guys a little presentation. It doesn't have to be during my report right now. Um I did have a meeting today with Laramie Farms, so I can give you guys a little status update.
That sounds like an essential part of the zoning administrator report to me.
Okay. So the two developers. Semi, we're already forty-five minutes into this. We haven't gotten to the big pieces yet.
That's right, that's right.
We uh they've redone their plans to some extent. This is the new drawing.
Are they all the same?
No, there's multiple layers, but I can show you the rest if you guys want to. As you guys know, their lot is seventy-seven point one acres as currently presented. They're actually, they've changed it slightly from what they had originally shown us, which was all rental. And now they're showing condos.
Wow.
Ooh, so uh three buildings, seventy-four units for two hundred and twenty apartments. Both one and two bedroom. That's what they're looking at here. You'll see there's the big buildings that are further up, actually, up the hill. And then they also have eighty townhouses proposed on this end. And those are lower, closer to Route Four down.
How many bedrooms?
Those are, I believe, uh.
Twos and threes?
Yeah, two and three units, but uh those are, those are the owner, you know, like.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
And uh so uh as currently shown on that plan is uh three hundred and five units.
Okay.
And it's kind of cool, as it, as it comes around, you'll see they've re- reconfigured the driveway to uh sort of provide a little bit more buffer for the the condos so that you don't have to drive through the condos.
To get to the.
To get to the upper units. You sort of drive.
Okay.
To the downhill side of them. So the upper units are rental?
Yeah, they would be big multifamily uh apartment buildings.
Right.
And there is a, there is a road proposed that would be uh that would be emergency only down to Maple Street. That would be gated for emergency access only, but it would also be available for pedestrian, which, as you guys.
Did the state approve?
They're working on that.
All this under it for?
They, that's, they're working on that. They've had BSP, the traffic engineering firm, do the traffic study. They have a meeting scheduled for DOT, they work on this. It's funny, because that was my first question, like, as as we've seen with the other development.
Yeah.
That was the big snag is is the DOT stuff. And they seem very confident because they did, this has been approved. They, they've been a couple of iterations. Yeah.
And that doesn't affect us.
They do actually.
Because that's a driveway permit.
They do own three lots on Maple that they would develop as single-family home lots. That's, those are these three. This is the emergency only access down to Maple right here. So that's what this one's showing.
Okay.
Um they will need special exception relief uh for the crossing the wetlands. They most likely would need a height variance. The buildings as currently proposed for the condos are something in the vicinity of thirty-eight feet high, or ours is thirty-five.
How do they get around the uh more than one principal building?
Well, that's, that's, that's a good topic of conversation right now because if you guys want, we can, we have time to schedule a hearing for January to remove that language about the principal building.
Well, do we need to have a hearing?
Yes, they have to change the earlier January.
It's gotta go on the town, town warrant.
Well, no, no. Um let me back up. So the way I understand this, this happened is you interpreted the ordinance as saying that you could have more than one principal building in a lot.
Yeah, right.
Um if if uh if you find that, let's say that that was incorrect later, can you not just tell the developer, I, it's it's incorrect?
Well, so I make an administrative decision. And everything that I say is appealable. So if it's not appealed, then whatever I said would stand. Well.
But it would be, it could be appealed at the time we approved the entire pro, the the entire plan.
Right.
It could be approved at that point.
Yeah.
Where we've got an approved, there's an approved plan and it's appealed based on that, based on an administrative decision.
I mean, I would be inclined uh when the presentation is, or when the hearing's scheduled, when you ask us, is the application complete, I would probably say, no, it isn't. It doesn't address that, that one issue.
Yep. So we do have the opportunity, if you guys are so inclined, right now, we could put forth one or two amendments for the zoning ordinance before the town meeting of two thousand and twenty-four. And we could have it ready for hearings in early January.
I wouldn't feel comfortable making that kind of change without talking to the consultants as, because there's a huge ripple effects, because it would be, you can't just say for this parcel.
Yeah.
No, no, it's gonna be townwide.
Yeah.
I agree.
Or or some districts.
Yeah, or make it some districts, yeah.
Yeah, and I just think that's a huge ripple effects.
I I'm with Kurt.
Without having, knowing what the pros and cons are.
Yep.
You know, we're just doing knee-jerk zoning here.
Right, on some plans that, who knows what they're gonna look like when they come in for the real uh side plant, real review.
My personal feeling is the principal building language in our current ordinance right now is very weak. Meaning, I mean, we we talked about this.
It's appealable in each direction.
Yeah, and they said, that's our principal building. They put a sign on it, principal building.
Right.
And if they take, if somebody appeals this and say, no, 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 you can't do that, if they take it to the Housing Appeals Board, we lose.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Oh, I know, no, no.
I know we lose.
I think what's weak is the argument you made.
Well, then, then.
So there's no definition of principal building in our ordinance, okay? So why can't they say that's our principal building? It's got the, it's got the, it's got the company office.
Because the principal building has five or six clones that are exactly the same.
Right, yeah.
But like I said, if they put an office in one for the real estate office, that's the principal building.
That doesn't fly, Rob.
Yeah, well, then.
Show it to me in case law. You guys are just blowing smoke here. I don't, I totally disagree.
I think you're blowing smoke too.
Whether it's the smokes being blown or not, do we wanna fix it or not?
Yeah.
No.
He says he doesn't wanna fix it.
Not, not, not even, right, it's not even emergency.
Not unless December thirteenth.
Yeah, right.
Well, okay then.
We've been having this discussion for over a year.
Then it's, then it's not a question we need to answer. We're not gonna do it.
Right.
Right.
Move on.
Which is.
I don't wanna get into any more detailed discussion on this.
On this one, especially.
Since it might eventually come before us.
Right.
And we don't wanna prejudice anybody.
And this is just a colored drawing of, what do you think, maybe?
Yeah, I've invited them for a conceptual. They can come back for a conceptual.
Right, it's not even conceptual.
It actually says conceptual in the title.
They're not here presenting it. They can come back with it.
Right.
All right, folks, let's, let's get back to the agenda.
I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Um this is two minutes from November twenty-nine.
You wanna hand me that last one? I found no errors.
I did.
Oh.
Yeah, I did too. I forget where it was.
It's very small, line eighty. The last uh where it starts at the time, it just all needs to be one sentence. At the time the building was built, the bond was for less than the estimated amount to build and the insulation was one of several things that were cut. Just making it one sentence.
I agree. Seventy-eight, um that should read, the D P is, the building envelope. Just some words.
Right. You're right, building.
And the line seventy-nine has an incomplete sentence.
Well, that's, that's starting with.
The whole paragraph needs to be rewritten, seventy-eight through eighty-one. Yeah, why don't we let Whitney just kind of massage it?
Yeah, she doesn't need any more information. It just needs to be cleaned up.
Right.
Um in line one eighteen, the new contractor has had regular and positive communication. With whom? What does that relate to?
To, to Rob.
Well.
And and members of the planning board.
With Enfield?
With the town, with, yeah. Anybody.
With town personnel.
With town personnel.
Town personnel.
I got line one forty. The uh. Mr. Jennings pointed out tonight's community member should, should say halfway down the sentence, he should have raised the same topic that the board discussed at line several months ago. Which, by the way, is the topic we just started.
We just talked, exactly, yeah.
Still had the word raised.
And I got line one ninety-six. Mr. Russell said that he wanted to avoid, I think he just introduced the word zone. That work?
Avoid making the choice for people. Is that what it means?
I'm not sure if he understood the word zone. I think maybe the comma, if that was.
I think you get rid of the comma.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not trying to avoid zoning, we're trying to avoid zoning making decisions for people.
Oh, just the comma.
Right, there you go.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Anyone else have any comments?
I propose we accept the minutes as corrected. I propose we accept the minutes as corrected.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor. I oppose extensions. Minutes are accepted as amended and as they will be amended unanimously. Next, rules of procedure.
There's a clean printed copy. Does anybody have any last-minute changes?
I'm moving to adopt the rules of procedures as printed.
Second.
Motion made, made by Eric, seconded by Brad, all in favor.
I. This is in four months, we have to do it again.
I know. Opposed, um, extensions.
We just run with standard what we have.
Yeah. Uh, rules of procedure are adopted unanimously, and Rob, just pass your, uh, clean copy around for signature. Um, zoning ordinance rewrite. Uh, we had a proposed scope of work slash contract from resilience. Rob and I and Brad took a look at it, made some comments. Um, we had a Zoom conference Monday of this week, I think it was.
Yep.
Um, we voiced our concerns to Steve Whitman, and he incorporated all of them to the best that I can see into a revised contract. Uh, we also talked about the phase two of the master plan, for which he also provided a proposed scope of work and contract. We made a few comments and changes on those. And.
Did that sign, copy?
Both of them signed, executed.
Well, it's a done deal.
Have you sent it to him?
Yeah.
What is that?
The contract.
Two contracts with resilience. One for the master plan phase two and one for the New Hampshire off grant. Ed signed them yesterday. I've obviously scanned them, sent them back to Steve Whitman. So we now have a contractor.
Nice job.
Good. Could you send a digital copy of that to the members?
I can, yep. I do have a, I have the same copy that I scanned for this, so.
So we are gonna have a kickoff meeting in two weeks. Thank you, glasses. Um, is Steve actually coming? I think he is, isn't he?
He is, yep.
Uh, which will be a kickoff for both the zoning rewrite and the master plan.
Will Liz and Mark be there as well?
Yeah, I think so. They'll all come.
So we need to reconstitute a master planning task force. We think it'll be a little bit easier this time. We'd like to have some people from this board um, serve on the master planning task force as they did last time. Um, I think the last time it was, Eric, you were on master plan, myself and Phil. And this time, you know, anybody who is interested, um, is certainly welcome to state their interest. Uh, Rob has a few people who have expressed interest in being involved in the master plan. And if he hasn't reached out to them already, he's going to with the expectation that, you know, we'll do a little bit of winnowing, uh, looking at people so that we have a kind of a broad representation of demographics, where people live, what their areas of interest are, age, et cetera, et cetera, just like we did the last time. And, uh, they are gonna try, you know, when we're doing public involvement, um, they're gonna try to hit, uh, both master plan and, uh, the zoning while we have a bunch of people together. You'll see in the scope of work that there's a, uh, a phase where we're going to, where they are going to have meetings or reach out to key stakeholders, which we have already talked about possible, uh, members of that group. Uh, there are two public meetings that we're gonna plan where people can give input. There will be some sort of a online survey, online and also hard copy. And then after the draft is written, there will be another final public meeting at which we say, did you get it right? And hopefully, if we've done our homework correctly and talked to enough people over the course of the next six or so months, um, we should have the same kind of reception that we had with the master plan, which is, I think we had one person who was not happy with the master plan at the table at that meeting, so. We're, we're embarking on it, and the, um, five chapters that we're dealing with all have existing committee structure or boards or study committees or whatever. So that should make it a lot easier because we have core groups. And a lot of them have been asking, when is this gonna start? And that we are gonna have a start date.
Which is?
Well, the kickoff is the twenty-seventh, two weeks from tonight.
Oh.
That would be.
That's just, that's just for us.
Oh.
And, you know, anybody, I, I would say anybody who is, uh, on the five committees that we're dealing with, I think we should invite them, which are recreation.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure we should.
No, no.
No, because unless you want them giving their input at that kickoff meeting. All right.
Yeah, I think it's a chance for us to get to know these folks.
Yeah, and, and I don't want us to lose the zoning ordinance piece
Right.
by spending three-quarters of an hour on the master plan piece.
Okay, I didn't take that.
So it, it'll be recreation?
Recreation, historic, preservation.
Heritage, right.
Heritage, energy.
DPW.
Town facilities and conservation, facilities and services.
Right.
Any questions?
Yes.
Tim?
There was a, were we supposed to get some, uh, uh, the audit?
Uh, hope, maybe that will be.
That was my question to these folks, that, um, we initially had talked about with them and with Rob about getting the zoning audit presented officially to us on the twenty-seventh of December. They backed off that a little bit, and they said, we're gonna come and get your ideas. They, they've, they've gone through, and it was evident when we talked to them that they had gone through everything that Rob had passed on. So that was promising. I was a little disappointed that they weren't gonna have the official audit, but they said, uh, they're gonna meet with us and then have the official audit in a week to, it sounds like, January. Which, it just keeps getting pushed off a little bit, makes me nervous, but.
Right, but, like, the contract was executed yesterday, so.
Yeah, right.
Right, I, I, I think they'll be able to pump on it and catch up.
I wouldn't have put much money into resources if I didn't have a signed contract.
That's right.
Yeah.
Question?
Resilience, right.
So on the twenty-seventh, if you want, are inviting members of this, uh, these five committees?
No, we're not.
We're not going.
We're not, no.
Ah.
No.
I, I said it, and the rest of the crew said.
We jumped down his throat.
Thank you, Brad.
Yeah.
We're not.
Because they've been waiting a long time to save the pieces.
They're gonna have to wait.
They can wait a little longer.
They're gonna have to wait another meeting or two. But it will happen.
And we, and, and we need time to gather the people, right?
Right.
Yeah.
The sixty thousand dollar grant is for the zoning piece.
Right.
We really need to get that, because that actually does have.
It has a hard.
With a hard date to get it done.
And the master plan, those funds will be encumbered for the entirety of twenty twenty-four. So there's, you know, while you're gonna try to do both of them simultaneously, um, if they wanna get paid, they've gotta finish up on the zoning rewrite by the end of July. And then they can.
And we have to pay them by the end of July.
Well, no.
No?
We have, we have to submit our invoices
Oh.
to the grant administrators.
With a draft.
With a draft by the end of July.
Right.
Um, they then take thirty-plus days to pay us, and we then pay the con, the consultant. And, um, you know, we, we should be pretty much finished by the end of July. And the, the master plan could extend to a year from now.
So the, the new contractors will be coming to visit us on the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Okay.
Kind of a kickoff meeting to sort of
Yeah.
introduce them, and they'll be here in person.
And, and, and at that time, they wanna ask us questions to get our feedback.
Yeah.
And we won't have any hearings or anything like that?
No.
No applications, nope.
If we did, we put them off.
Um, yeah, he asked us if, if we had the whole meeting, right?
We do, yeah.
And we, we said yes.
Yeah, so if anybody wants a conceptual, our agenda is.
Yep.
Sorry.
Well, they haven't met the twenty-one days anyways.
Correct.
For an application.
For an application, we'll put them to.
Well, for a conceptual, anybody can come in.
Well, yeah, but anyway can be scheduled to come in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I won't schedule.
So we, we will not schedule anything.
Right, yeah.
Uh, any, any more questions on zoning rewrite slash master plan?
Well, I don't know if you just wanna hold off, because it's been like this for so long, on the parking stuff, something for this year's ballot, or just, just leave it?
I'd like to leave it, you know, because there's, there's a good chance it's, it could change.
Yeah.
It could change in a way that our consultant doesn't advise us to. So I think just, let's just let it sit for another year.
Should we, um, I'm thinking, would it be helpful if we just come up with our own list of things that we think need to be looked at, changed? And to add, so we have our, so we can ask questions and say.
Absolutely, have that, have that list with you to, to tonight.
You know, different things that's
Yeah.
off the top of my head that's, I think, just need to be rewritten at the minimum.
Yeah, yeah. Have, have it, you know, in a form that you can either email it to them or give them hard copy or both.
Maybe me as well, sort of like parking, our parking regs.
Yeah.
What should we do?
Right.
Um, gravel pits, what should, ordinance, what should we do?
Yeah.
Yeah, cell towers, what should we do? You know, just one line, just as a broad topics are.
Yeah, I mean, uh, Rob gave something similar, a list, something similar to him, so. And it was funny, because we were talking to the Mark guy, who was their zoning guy, who was like, oh, yeah, mm, yeah, yeah, mm, and he was like, so, this guy.
Principal buildings, what should we do?
Yeah, I mean, those, those are hot button issues pretty much everywhere.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, on the parking thing, I would like to say that, uh, or ask, ask. Where that, our parking regulations are being applied to residential developments, I don't, I don't really think we're running into much of a hindrance over the next year. Uh, where they do seem to be aggravating and difficult is with commercial, retail, that sort of thing.
So my question to you, Rob, is, um, do you even anticipate any issues coming up that would, would hinder some sort of development within the next year and a half?
With regard to parking or?
With regard to parking.
Well, these guys, today, they were talking about the, you know, the, as you, as you read our ordinance, there's
Two versions.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, is it, is it one or is it two? Is it eighteen? Is it twenty? Those kind of things.
Twenty's a ten or?
Right.
Ten by twenty, nine by eighteen.
If they're gonna have three hundred and eight units hypothetically, that's a lot of parking spaces.
Didn't, didn't I read two and a half spaces per unit?
Including a single-car garage.
And then they're probably designing to the, the most restrictive of our, what, what's currently in the ordinance.
Well, except where they go over.
Which is ten by twenty.
Ten by twenty.
Well, they can't go wrong if they do that.
Right.
Two, two spaces.
They can always ask for variance.
On the map, it said two point five. Maybe that was the condos.
Yeah, I think that was the condos.
Condo. Yeah, it's different.
Which will be bigger, two and three bedrooms.
Total, and, I guess, occasionally guess, I guess.
Okay, anything else on rewrite or master plan? Let's talk a little bit more about ten thousand-foot view of where we, where we wanna see our zoning regs go. Um, you know, Kurt suggested that we all think about parts of our regs that need to be addressed and come prepared with a list, and I think that's a great idea. Not required, but highly encouraged. Other than that, um, anybody wanna throw out a topic to discuss?
I, I reread the master plan last night, the section on land, it's not that long. And I'm, I'm sure that informed the discussion we had about what zoning districts we might wanna have, but I, I was just confirming in my own mind that what we kinda came up with at this table is exactly what seems that is in the master plan, so that, that was kind of interesting.
Yeah, thi- this vendor, this contract, contractor had, uh, gone through our master plan more than once, and so he's gonna be ready.
And he liked it. He liked our existing master plan.
Yep.
Did we, I think we touched on it, the question of multifamily homes in the rural, rural district, are they presently prohibited?
They're allowed in the R one, but it's definitely prohibited in the R three and R four.
Well, you can do a cluster. You can do a cluster.
Well, you, you're saying, you're saying multifamily homes, you think in duplex, apartments, duplex, and going up to apartments?
Yeah, or something like a rural townhouses.
I think that's one of the things that we would talk to these guys about, because we know that we want, we think we want, we've talked about how, uh, maybe it would be okay for, in some of these rural settings, that if they wanted to do cluster housing and save, you know, most of the land, open land and have clusters of whatever, uh, so, and they, they sounded like they had experienced it.
I, I did have one thought over the last couple of, yeah, we were talking about, like, should we try to adjust the ADU size and that sort of stuff? And what, what we're really saying is, should we allow multifamily housing everywhere? And so the thing I've been thinking about is, should we just allow up to four units? Because that's the difference between, uh, primary residents and commercials, between four and five, if you look at mortgages. And just allow that as, as a general use all through town? Because that's, it's simple, it's that low impact you were saying.
Light touch.
Light touch, it allows, it allows for housing.
Say it again, up to four units?
Four units, up to four units, because that's, so there's a, like, when you go to get a mo- a mortgage, four units is primary residence.
Yeah.
More than four is commercial.
Right, so, um.
And then you leave the ADUs exactly as the state defines them. Are we docking four units in a single structure or cluster or what? That's a, that's a separate discussion. How you allow, whether or not you allow more, more than one building is a different discussion, but if we, if we wanna encourage housing, and that whole discussion around, you know, having multiple ADUs, expanding the size of the ADUs, is really saying.
expanding the size of the ADUs is really saying, the real question is, do we wanna allow multifamily housing everywhere in town? If the answer is yes, then it suggests you just allow up to four units as a general right for everybody in town.
Right.
Which could give you somehow up to four, eight, up to twelve units? If you have two ADUs or?
No, you can't have ADUs on multifamily homes.
Okay.
That's only primary residence.
Okay.
So you leave the ADU exactly as the state defines, that's a nice, clean RSA.
Right.
You know, and then what does Enfield want? If Enfield wants to have housing options for property owners, you allow up to four units, that's still residential when they go to sell it.
Mm-hmm.
It's not commercial, you just allow that.
So some of these really large homes in town where?
They can just go to four units, now, obviously, building codes all apply, like, you know.
Yeah.
All that, you know, setbacks all. If you're, if you're in a rural area, you gotta build the four units, the four, you gotta build a septic system that can handle it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, uh, but just, that'd be a way to cleanly allow people to have housing in the properties.
And so if, if they wanted to propose five units or twelve or something.
Then it's commercial.
Commercial.
And what does that imply?
Well, that would imply some different site plan, and maybe in the rural parts of town, that's not allowed. Or maybe it is with a different site plan option. Uh, but as a general homeowner, you can get a residential mortgage, a primary residence mortgage with up to four units. If you go above that, the bank won't let you down.
Where does?
That's why I draw the line at four to five, cause when you go to sell it, you're selling a primary residence, not a commercial property.
Where does the need for a semi-regulated quote, community water system begin, do you know?
I don't know, but I know that you can have, I mean, if it's a primary residence, then just having a well and an approved septic would be. And, and that, that's one of those details that becomes the responsibility of the homeowner to have an adequate water supply and an adequate septic. And they're not gonna get occupancy permits from the building inspector unless they do.
Right, but it's gonna be designed anyways.
Right.
So, design has to meet the state regs.
Well, that's a good question, I think, to put to the consultant.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I mean, uh, the, I mean, but if we go that route, a limiting factor to maintain rural character would be lot size. You know, cause if you have, say, a ten acre out on end of Lock Haven Road or Bog Road or whatever, and you carve it out and you can get four units per acre, and you subdivide into a bunch of one acre lots.
But it ties in with other things, but if you are allowing, you're correct. If you, if we were to say you can subdivide as much as you want, and you can have four units per lot, then yes, that's your correct.
So, so I mean, that's, I mean, currently, right now, the way it's rooted, it's one unit per set lot style acreage. Zoning acreage.
Yeah.
Um, so like in the R five, you need four units, you need twenty acres.
Right.
Of space to put four units.
Right. This would increase, this would potentially increase the entire density of town.
Yeah, 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 so.
And if you're in the R three, then you could, you could only have the four units, is what we're saying, if it's a single lot.
Right.
Right, but if we're doing away with R three, R five, whatnot, and we're gonna relabel those, it's more geographically. Do you want that density in those parts of town? And it's not gonna be just one, if it's over time, it's, we go this route.
Yeah.
You have to think about if every lot or close to a lot of lots having that density.
A few of the lots, how many cluster developments have we had in the last twenty-five years?
Yeah, I, I know, but.
Zero is the number.
I think the motivation for us has gotta be that we encourage intergenerational housing. Which is something we used to do a hundred years ago, and we got away from. And I think that's a big part, you know, we talked about what's caused the problem.
The government never encouraged that.
Right.
That, that was just the reality, people live with the reality, multi-generational homes. This was a thing that we found this week in the Wall Street Journal, there was an article about the, uh, the homeownership dream died. And I absolutely believe that, because my kids, for them to go out into the world right now and buy a house or, you have any of that, it's impossible. Even myself, I couldn't buy a house now, I'm just, the, the costs have just gone so high. And you see it here, this, this graph, I can pass this around, the graph shows the, uh, average monthly rent versus the average monthly new home payment, and they're doing this. They're going, they're going away from each other, they sort of kept pretty good pace with each other through the last twenty years, and you'll see that in here. But it's just, it's crazy now, and you see, you know, for the whole, so what is it, you need thirty percent of your income, sort of the max that, you know, mortgage they want to give you.
Yeah.
So you need, you need to be making thirty-seven bucks an hour.
Right.
To be able to afford it, perhaps.
Apart from with all those studies, they base it on single pe- single person income.
Correct.
And my parents was the last generation that was able to do that.
Yeah, and the house they bought cost sixty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, but, yeah, but, I mean, the wage, you know, at that time, it was single p- single person.
Right.
Bread owner could buy the house and have one car, one car.
One car.
And, and no electronics.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and.
It's the change because.
Thousand dollars.
Housing is, housing is not being built.
Well, that's currently, that's the last.
That's what it is right now, if you had a bigger, uh, occup- occupant, a lower occupancy rate, if you had twenty percent of the houses on the market, the price would go down, and your kids would be able to buy houses. But right now, it's closer to one percent. So I can get whatever I, the problem is, when I sell my house, I can't afford to buy a new one, because the price has gone up, so why would I sell my house?
Exactly.
So the, the rural district, if it didn't have any acreage requirements, it's not gonna be called R five or R one.
Right.
It's the rural district. Um, I guess a question would be, how, how do you, how do you go from years and years of R three and R five, and people are used to that, and, you know, they've got experience with it, they've bought property, they're.
You asked this question.
You make it their idea during all these focus groups.
Yeah.
Um, for the folks who own some property and wanna subdivide, the question's easy to answer.
That's right.
Folks that just wanna maintain what they got, it's more difficult.
Right. Right.
We're just built to be different.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I mean, we're pushing, is it, we pushing what we want onto them? Or is it, we asking, what do you, that people that live there, what, what do you want?
What do you want?
We're not designing for people to, who don't even live here yet, because that's not my, that's not my approach.
Exactly, yes.
It's people that are currently living here, or currently paying the taxes.
Yes.
What do you wanna see?
Yeah.
Right. What I'm hearing.
I agree.
Uh, the state, this, I told you guys earlier about the state is considering state legislation for the double ADUs. Simultaneous, in that same piece of legislation, they're talking about bumping up the square footage for the eighty to a thousand. Right now, it's at seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
They, they wanna make it a thousand, which would obviously affect us, cause ours is at eight hundred.
Right.
Uh, and I've heard that when people come in here, and, and they're talking about solving a family need for housing.
Right.
The eight hundred is too small, I mean, eight hundred is good for sort of starter.
Right.
Housing, incubative housing, you know, elderly, mother-in-laws, what is. But for real, like, productive housing, meaning, maybe a family could live there, a thousand square feet.
And it's, it's.
If you have a sec- second bedroom.
Right, it was a, it was a family home, and now it's just a two-person, and I can't live in eight hundred, but boy, I could live in a thousand. And then the principal becomes my rental income.
Yeah. So Eric, in this situation, what you were proposing, not that you're proposing.
Yeah, yeah, the question we asked.
Right.
Um, that wouldn't even be a question.
Correct.
Right.
Cause, because if you just allow multifamily housing, that can be any square footage.
Could be any square footage, and we, we automatically meet the terms of the RSA.
Correct.
Because we're more.
Right.
Or less restricted. So we wouldn't even have an ADU section perhaps.
Correct, it would be, it'd be a moot point at that point, yeah.
Right. Where you might be able to get the rural character issue is by, in certain areas of town, expanding the buffer or expanding the setback. Where your four units up in Lock Haven Road, up by the Potato Road, has to have a hundred and fifty-foot setback from the, from the, it's the lot, the next lot.
Yeah.
So then you keep the rural, you also keep wildlife corridors open.
Right.
Um, and that, you may be able to do stuff like that.
And road frontage requirements.
And road frontage requirements.
I mean, right, that's.
Which is, which is happening now, I mean, if you, if you're in an R five, you gotta have two hundred and fifty feet of road frontage. Well, that takes care of a, a couple of issues.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that keeps the, the visual, someone driving down the road.
Right.
It, it looks rural.
And, and you may have to, in a rural zone, even if you allow multifamily housing, you may have to say you can only have one driveway.
Right, one driveway.
That would be a rural.
Right.
One, one driveway, yeah.
Yeah.
And you expand the setbacks, including the one from the road.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and so, so that's to the left and to the right, and you want them to build up as close as.
Right.
Front as.
Yeah.
You know, can commit, which is probably, or, or not, because you don't wanna see it from the road.
Right, you may say you've got to have a fifty-foot buffer from the road.
Yeah.
It makes their lo- it makes their driveway longer, but.
Yeah, but you, you could, but, yeah, exactly.
And the problem, and the problem is, a lot of that up there is far field land, so fifty-foot setback doesn't help you on the front, because it's a field. So, you know.
I think what Eric is saying, though, is, is where you're gonna make hay, because.
Right.
I think being able to add more units to an existing property is where you'll actually have more success. Cause I think right now that we have this, there's, there's actually a pretty hard, high barrier for subdivision.
Right.
You guys have seen it, there's only a couple of surveyors in the Upper Valley that are available. They're so busy, it's expensive to get a sub- subdivision survey done. I bet it costs three, four, five thousand dollars, right, depending on complexity of the survey, where work they gotta do.
And they're not young.
Yeah, they're not, there's no, there's no young people coming along.
The two surveyors are not young.
The surveyor can't do the engineering, so you, you gotta have an engineer.
I mean, it's the whole chain of command, you know, chain of command, but chain of, whatever services that you require.
Exactly.
The survey to do the subdivision, finding a builder to actually build the thing, finding the septic guy, actually put the septic in.
Because, yeah, exactly.
Just lack of people doing their work.
Electricians love to do in units that are already there. If they've got to wire an entire house, it takes them a lot longer, they can make a lot more money putting in, in new services in a house that's there than they can doing the complete new system, because then it takes them three or four days when they could have done eight changes services.
Yeah.
In the same time.
You may be right, I don't know, maybe, maybe an electrician.
Well, it's sort of like, not, really not our problem either.
Yeah, no, it's not our problem, but it's, it's, it has to do with how, why the housing.
Right.
Why she's gotta wait three years for a painter, because the painter would rather be up in Lebanon doing the three hundred units on Mount Support Road.
Or the four hundred unit one, or the other four hundred unit one.
Exactly.
Or like our woodworking owner who was in here a few weeks ago. One house is keeping him alive for an entire year.
Right, exactly, bad little, yes.
Yeah.
That's, that's, you know, that's a house with a million dollar kitchen.
Right, yes.
And it's not an infield, no, thank you.
I have a question I think you should think about, and I don't have the answer at all to this one. But it's a problem we're starting to see lots of places in town, which is, can zoning address water runoff?
Yeah.
It ties into parking, it ties into the number of buildings.
Yeah. Material, pervious surfaces.
I mean, currently, the regs say it can't exceed what's already there.
Right.
Any new development cannot exceed runoff from what's there. Um, so.
I, I think it's an important question, I don't know the answer.
Stormwater management, right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, I think, I think we've already talked about how specifically in the lake districts.
Right, but it, but it goes well beyond that.
That's the problem, the people who suffer, I'm gonna toot my own horn. Okay, but we can't control the stormwater.
Right, it's one where it's coming up from the hill.
It's coming from above.
We see the impacts on the lake.
The reason you're on the lake, is that's where the water's going.
Like, like even, think, think about my house, Tim, if I were to suddenly pave my backyard, then all that water goes directly into Knox Brook, which goes directly into the lake.
Right.
Right, I mean, as a crazy example that. But, but, but it's a, it's a case where, you know, what I do impacts what flows into the lake.
So the.
Yeah.
The smallest sort of project we might have would be, say, a single-family home gonna be built on a vacant lot. Um, to what extent can zoning deal with stormwater runoff?
Yes, that's the question.
When, I don't think the state regulations.
Well, de- de- yes, to an extent, though, right?
I think. Only on the water.
Only on the water.
Only on the water, yeah.
Yeah.
The lakes and certain streams.
Yeah, I could put as much water as I want into the ditch.
Yeah.
If I shake a hill road, I could put as much water as I want into the ditch.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Even though it affects somebody else down.
Yeah.
Yeah, it affects the Masco River, cause that's where it ends up.
Interesting. Well, I think, I, I think in our, to tip your stormwater off into the, like, ditches and storm drainage systems, that's one thing. But whatever you do on your property that might affect the neighbor.
Right.
Someone downstream.
Right.
Um, you know, what, yeah, I, I love the question.
It, it, is it just sort of, you know, common practice? Or is there a actual law statewide that says if you're uphill and you increase the runoff from your property, and it damages the.
There's nothing, because that's what happened on our road, our road got washed out because of the culvert that people put in up on, um, Oak Hill, and Boys Camp Road, and Oak Hill Road, and Choate, and all of that. And all of that water came down and, and washed us out.
Cause I, I, there may be a statute in Vermont to that effect.
Yeah.
And I will have to investigate, cause we may be able to.
Well, I can just keep it simple, just adopt Act two fifty.
That is not simple.
And, and it does not regulate.
It's a good question, though.
Yeah.
It's a great question for the, and certainly civil suits have been filed.
Oh, yeah, that's it, it becomes a civil issue, and not an ordinance issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it may well be something we can't really mandate, but where we wanna at least have an educational component about best practices.
Well, I, I think, well, the reason I brought up the single-family home.
Yeah, no, I, no, that's what I'm, that's, that's the one I was thinking about too, cause you don't wanna make it super, you don't wanna add cost.
Exactly.
But at the same time, if, you know, if my neighbor bulldozes, right, the easy thing is like, you just make it flat, and now it just flows into my basement.
Right.
Right, that's, that's a problem for me, whereas if they made a swell, it would flow somewhere else.
Right.
Yeah, and which might be a problem for somebody else, you know.
The town system.
Right. And, yeah, well, and in commercial, we do have control over that, that's why Family Dollar had to have the rain garden, and so did Jakes.
Anything with the site plan review.
Right, it's, it's the commercials that we, we can regulate in the site plan.
So where is that line? It's not the single-family home.
No.
Is it?
Commercial.
It'll be the five unit.
How about when you get to, uh?
It's part of the site plan.
Site plan, but it's the five unit, it would be, then become a commercial property, even for housing, so you would be able to.
Well, three inches, three inches is considered multifamily, right?
Yeah, and we require a site plan for.
Right. So it's at three up. At site plan.
It's three units then.
Yeah.
Where it is current.
Where it is currently.
Yeah, you can build a single-family home or a duplex without a site plan, but if you get to three family, you know, and up, you gotta go.
And that's probably the reason.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, you're talking a larger structure, more parking.
Right, right, more, more pervious surface. Yeah.
That, that does make sense. And maybe we wanna, well, we'd wanna ask the question, where should the line be drawn?
Yeah, is the line at four? Because that's where, you know, are we saying, okay, if we can, if you, you have, by right can do fours, then maybe that's the line for site plan. We need to ask that question too.
Well, I think building code changes dramatically once you get to three family.
Right, right, the building code does, but not the site plan piece, you know?
Well, even if you can, even if we do allow four units.
We could still require.
We could still require.
Say, if you're gonna do three, then a site plan review is required.
Yeah, yeah. Right, okay, yeah, you still have to do a site plan, but you can do four in a lot, by right.
You know, in the village district, I, I, I was thinking that, I'm just curious how this might play, is, is that if you have a, a lot and you wanna put up an apartment building and eight or nine units in it, you can meet setbacks, you got enough room for parking, et cetera.
Yeah.
Why would you even wanna say we, four is all right? You, you could just say you can build as many as you want, anywhere you want.
Well, I, I think in the village district, you're correct.
Right.
I mean, I was thinking more of like, as a minimum, like for the town as a whole, in general.
Right.
Do we wanna just say you can have multifamily housing?
Right.
And then, yes, there would be areas where you could do other things as well. But I don't think we'd wanna say you can have, you know, a large factory anywhere in town. Like, we'd wanna have some sort of industrial.
Right.
Area, you know, as a sort of a.
Yeah. Right.
But no, I, I agree, I think if you're on water and sewer, that's different than if you're in the rural area.
Or, um, or a community public water supply.
Mm-hmm, right.
Same thing, a community sewer system.
Right.
And, and, and honestly, it might be a situation where the lake, because the lake lots are so small, we don't wanna allow that on the lake lots.
Right.
And runoff is so, so big of a concern on the lake lots, those may be, actually be an exception in the other direction, as we think it through.
I'm gonna toss this, this concept out. So we know what the term N V.
Right.
A lot of the reasons we have the zoning ordinance we have is because of that thinking. However, I would suggest along the lake that, um, if there's anywhere in town where N V makes a heck of a lot of sense to everybody, that might be the place. Cause A, it's not a place where we're gonna solve the housing problem. It's not ever gonna be a workforce or a low-cost housing.
Over that long.
Solution.
No.
And if the folks around the lake tell us, cause we're gonna ask them.
Yeah.
That we want to be really restricted in terms of additional housing going up and that sort of thing, I think we probably don't just pay attention.
But.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have, do we have a zone that you can't have eighty units? Like the lake?
Well, we'll ask the lake people.
Well, you ask the lake people.
Yeah, I can tell you what they'll say right now.
Well, listen.
Bell A D U.
You know what? I bet you half of them won't, cause they wanna rent eighty units.
Right.
Right?
Well, yeah, so.
Yeah, that's the other side, that's the other side.
So you hear from the people that are.
Full-time.
Full-time residents, they, they want everything left the same, right?
Right.
You've got people that are there, uh, ten weekends a year.
Right.
And they wanna rent to pay for the taxes.
Right.
Right? Uh, they don't care what happens to the lake, and there's all kinds of stories. I, I can spend three hours telling you stories about crowds of people showing up at the boat ramp, getting hauled over to certain camps on the lake. And then there's a third group of people in town who want the lakes built up as much as possible to raise the tax money.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, there, there's, there's a group that feel that way as well. What's happening? Yes, it is, but I just. What is it, twenty, twenty-eight percent of the town's revenue comes from the lakes? Four percent of the properties that are around the lakes.
Well.
Something like that.
And I don't, I don't think we need to.
No.
Wanna encourage it to all be built up as much as possible, but we don't wanna hurt.
Yeah, no, I. That's why we wanna listen to them.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, that's gonna be, I have had people say that to me.
Oh, yeah?
You know? Build them up, build them up. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I've gotta use Johnson Beach.
Of course, the, the A D, the state A D U regulation would trump.
Right, but it could, it would only be one. We could go by the state, we could say on the lake district, in that zone, it's one A D U.
But the problem is. So what happens when the state boosts it to two?
I know, you still get the setbacks.
We have no choice.
Right, and on the lake.
Yeah.
You're not gonna get your setbacks.
I mean, well, if someone wanted to carve an apartment out of their existing structure.
They could.
They could.
They could, but first of all, houses, I mean, there's a few giant, but most of them are small. Mine's small.
Yeah, the ones that live in the giant houses, live in the giant houses, yeah. They don't rent it in a mile and every.
I'm thinking of a friend who has a really nice garage that.
Yep.
Love what he can.
Apartment above the garage.
I mean, state law.
Yes. Right.
Right.
And, and the limiting fact that there will probably be like, the septic's a septic.
Right. And, and the apartment under the, over the garage isn't a problem, because you're not adding in on the, you're not adding more.
Density.
Density to the property. The footprint is not going to be causing more water to go into the lake.
But the septic.
The septic will. Septic, right. And if he's willing to spend another thirty thousand dollars on the septic. Which is going to be.
With that kind of a change on a lake property, I think you have to go through the state for the survey. Cause you're on the wa, you're within two hundred feet of the water. And that's where they start looking at the pervious material and they counted my number of trees and, and the diameter of the trees to give me a number.
Yeah.
Uh, it was pretty interesting.
Yeah.
And expensive.
So, um, one question I wanna ask them is, is how to deal with comfortably, sensitively deal with mobile homes? And I brought that issue up before.
Right.
I think I may have stumbled across a reasonable way to address that, which is dealing with the building codes.
Right.
How, before you get too far, are you thinking individual mobile homes, or are you thinking mobile home park?
Well, um, I mean, if, if someone wanted to build another mobile home park, like we have that on four A, I, I think that's fabulous, you know? Can we, can we somehow allow that? Could they do that today?
No, we, we can't not allow it.
Right.
Right.
By state law.
You'd want them, you'd want them on pound sewer though, wouldn't you?
Yeah, they can be with the site plan.
Or, or a community septic.
Community septic, like the one down on four A is a community septic.
So.
Four on four is a community septic too.
It would seem that a.
Yes, it is.
It would seem that a cluster development, uh, could encompass a, I mean, it could be a mobile home park.
Right, it could be.
Yes, as well as stick built for it. I guess where I'm mainly interested is, um, is the A D U question I've raised this before, you know, about someone sliding a junky old mobile home on a lot next to me. Some landlord just wants to make money, doesn't care what the thing looks like. That doesn't help property values in the neighborhood. To me, that seems like harm has been caused, is there anything we can do to, to prevent that? So that's a question, man.
And let's see what our advisor says.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean. I, I think, Tim, had you suggested that, um, a newly constructed A D U be architecturally compatible with existing?
I thought that might be the way, but I can see where that is rather subjective, no, it seemed to be the more straightforward and unsubjective way to deal with it is require it to be built uh, to the same codes as the existing house. So, uh, any work done on that house to put an apartment in, obviously follow the International Building Code, any structure to put on that property would have to be the same.
Any living structure?
Well, even any.
I'll throw that to you, Rob, what does the RSA say? High by right could have an A D U? Does the state say that we can control the A D U that gets put in there?
I don't think so.
I mean, it might be just silent, it might just be silent on.
Well, it, it can be silent, but we can't be more restrictive than the RSA.
It's pretty broad.
We can be less restrictive, but not more restrictive.
Yeah, but it, it, it does say in that statute that it has to meet all the other requirements of zoning.
Right.
Building codes and so forth.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I wouldn't have a problem if it has to meet the building codes, but the aesthetics code might be a real issue.
Well, I mean, you, you could build a stick-built ugly thing that.
Right.
What are you gonna?
I know.
Yeah.
You can't.
That's why it's, you're right, it's a, it's a question yet to be answered.
Four-sided box with a door and a window.
Yeah.
You know?
Oh, yeah.
You know, a big doghouse. You know, I mean, it's, it has the bedroom, kitchen, bathroom.
Roll in a boxcar.
Um, Sam, we seem to be pretty restrictive also on R Vs. And, uh, I, I, I always kinda question why they only allow people to live in those, like, six weeks out of the year. So it's three weeks on an occupied lot, you know, the house, the, the lot already has a house on it. And on an unoccupied lot with no house, six months. But I would, I would say to you, and as I've described to a lot of people, campers are not made for winter.
Right.
Well, some are, but they're.
Very few. What we looked at, what you looked into, when we were looking at campus to buy.
Right.
We were looking at that, and, yeah, there's, they're not sold here.
Yeah, no.
They're sold out west in Oregon and Wyoming and places like that.
So I just, I mean, I think the history there is you don't want people having carbon monoxide poisoning in the, in the camper in the wintertime.
But if it's six, if it's gonna be six, how long for?
Six months.
Why not do that for occupied?
I think, I think the, you tell me, you were here when we did it. I think it was, you didn't want, you know, people to have their house and then have a camper, somebody living in it.
Yeah.
But that could be the short-term rent, well, it's not a year-round A D U, but it's a short-term rental.
Short, right, short-term rental.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, and you do it for the warmer.
For the summer.
For the summer.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, non, non-free, below freezing, cause you have to winterize it. So it has to, as soon as the temperature goes below freezing, your camper better be winterized.
Well, yeah, but it, right now, it has to move, doesn't it? It can't be on the lot more than six months.
No, you can, I mean, if it's not in use as a camper.
Okay.
Storing for the whole year.
Yeah, the only issue comes in is, are you tied, uh, what do you do with your septic?
Yeah, well, that's in the, in ordinance, it's supposed to have accommodations for.
Right, right, but if it's gonna be, if it's gonna be six months.
Right.
You probably wanna be tied into some kind of septic system.
Yep.
Right.
Well, it is easy, you just hook up your hose.
I had one who was, uh, again, there was no septic, and so the guy was literally stepping out every morning, and the neighbors crossed the street, I see him. Relieving himself right there.
Right, exactly.
Can you take care of this? This is not acceptable.
That's why I have a buffer on my ass.
That's how the issue becomes the septic.
I've had to do a lot of the camp.
I had a neighbor.
Oh, really?
Yes.
That's the Yankee way.
And, and the only other thing I've heard is the, the visuals.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
How about backyard livestock?
So there is, uh, so in, in our R one, fire metals are a special exception.
Right.
And it's because, I mean, if you only have a half an acre, you really shouldn't have fire metals.
Well, we had, we had chickens on our third of that acre downtown for twenty-five years.
Yep, right, exactly. Poultry, there is current.
There's that.
There's a common.
It's noisy and odor.
But even that, there, there's, you know, there's frustration, a lot of people will get chickens, just let them, let them go, you know, like free range. And, and be out on the street.
Route four.
There's somebody that's got chickens. Somebody's got chickens right near the E V S, the Villa School.
Well, yeah.
We always get complaints.
Oh, the yellow house.
Chicken is in the road, in the middle of Route four, like, oh my god.
Well, there's chickens in, in the road on Jake Hill Road.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Don't move, it's fine, hey, sorry. Turkeys move too, you know? Rural character.
Right.
So what about shipping containers?
Ooh, that's one I would love to see some kind of provision for too, but.
Well, yeah, that's right.
I mean, it is a.
It's a tiny house.
It is a structure, it can be a tiny house, it can be a garage.
Yeah.
It can be lots of things.
But you don't have egress out of those.
They open the front and the back.
On TV, they have programs about, you know, you, you cut out a patio door here.
Right, yeah. You could put one on top of the other, cause they're stable.
Yeah.
Out in the Wild West.
In ladders and by two A D U.
Well, see, in, in case.
Yeah.
Someone wanted to use a shipping container as a, as an A D U.
Right.
It would have to be constructed the same code as the house.
Right.
Another way of thinking. Uh, which is all achievable.
Yeah.
You can do that.
If you hide the shipping container in the walls.
Well, some of them can be rather.
Right.
Sensitive, I, I think, but, uh, you know, others can be, just still leave half alkaloid on the side of it.
Yes, right.
All the rust and so.
Yep, that's character.
Yeah, what are you gonna do?
Right, but, I mean, even separate from housing, is, are they currently, do they currently count as sheds because they can be moved so easily? I have taken action as, considering the structure.
Yeah.
So it's any combination of materials, temporary or permanent, placed upon or in the ground.
Yeah.
So we've, cause we've had setback issues with numerous occasions. But that would, I'd love to see that cleaned up a little bit, I'd love to see that.
Do they tax them?
Well, Canon does.
Canon taxes them?
Yes, I, we have, one of our warehouse burned, we bought a shipping container because we had to be able to receive a big shipment and get it.
Yep.
Since the roof was gone, quickly undercover, and that's where our tractor goes for the winter now. Um, so we have one shipping container and we have two of those truck bodies, not, what do you call them?
Trailers.
Truck, trailers.
Yeah, back tractor trailer backs.
And they did, they told me, they, Canon told me they wouldn't tax them, but they are on my tax bill, itemized now.
Interesting.
Well, we.
Yeah.
It's not been my experience.
It's not been my experience.
Well, yeah, but.
In Canon, anyway.
Not in, but.
I, I talked to you about that.
Sheds are. Sheds are taxed.
Yes, they're.
My shed's taxed.
Right.
Right here.
Yeah.
Field.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Every little roof that projects over a door in my house is, is taxed.
A shed is taxed, but Maynard's, uh, Closet Hut type, um, sheds are not.
Not taxed.
Right.
And there's no permits for, uh, fabric structures.
Right.
Yeah.
Building permit form either.
I think those look like hell personally.
I do, and they don't last very long.
They don't last very long.
Snow kills them, ice.
It seems like I, I, uh, I remember there being lots of discussions and disputes over things like landscape structures that were, uh. In the setback areas. And, uh, it sounded like our zoning ordinance was a little morally restrictive about that. Painting walls, uh.
I know that my, my steps, as long as they're not attached to the house and they're, it's considered landscaping. And not part of the house and is allowed.
It was carved out in the definitions section.
Yeah.
For, uh, landscape features are, are considered structures but are exempt from the buffer requirements.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, good to know.
Yeah, so, uh, when we were at that conference last week, they were talking about conditional use permits, which we don't, we don't do here. And that's something the planning board can do. So that's something we should explore, I think, too.
Give me an example.
Oh, wait a minute, I think we have one.
Instead of.
On Crystal.
A special exception which requires Z B A approval, conditional use is something that we would do.
Short-term?
No.
No?
Oh, okay.
Um, the, out on Crystal Lake, there was the lot where they wanted to. Build an apartment for their son to be over the garage and steps down.
Yes, I'm well versed in that.
That was, that was a door.
Yeah.
He, they said, they claimed the son needed the steps.
Because he has epilepsy.
Right.
Oh, a handicap, they said, I didn't understand what handicap.
And he won that.
Yes, but it was conditional, as long as he was there, but as soon as.
That's a separate issue though.
As soon as he left.
Yeah, but that's a, that whole class have to separate.
The, the deck and the stairs.
Right.
Which is within fifty feet of the water. They cut every tree down on the whole property too.
That's a different kind of conditional use.
Oh.
Um, that was one that was imposed by the court, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
And a conditional use permit would be something that we would be able to issue for certain. Types of structures or activities, thi- think of it all, think of it almost.
Bridge.
What?
When they repaired Mascoma Bridge, the Checoma Bridge, they, they, uh. D O T had to. Oh, was it the bridge or the wa, or the tunnel under it for the water, uh, sewer? Um, we let them do all kinds of things there you wouldn't be allowed to do where the park is now. So could they just do it because they were D O T?
Yeah.
Or did we give them the.
That's the answer, it's the state, the state does not have to follow any zoning regulations, nor does the town.
So, so what would be a planning board conditional use? Is it just a different term called as a special exception and it goes to planning board versus zoning? I would say for the most part, yes. Um, like in Vermont, we used to issue, be able to issue a conditional use permit on a lake house. If they wanted to use it year-round rather than seasonally, it would require a conditional use permit. And it would have, the property would have to meet certain criteria, parking, uh, accessibility for fire, E M S.
Snow.
Oil delivery, um.
Sounds like a couple particular complication we may not wanna add.
Rob, do you have? I, I just don't see it as being different than a special exception and it would make it easier for the applicant and less expensive.
I don't see that, how that, I mean, a special exception that's Z B A is only, is pretty close to a rubber stamp.
Right. Cause you don't have to show hardship.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. All you're showing is accommodation.
It's just going to a different board.
Right.
Do you have an example, Rob?
Yeah, so, uh, I think in the case of like Dover, I went down to Dover, they basically allow you to. Increase density if you meet certain conditions, that's kinda like a conditional use permit. So you, normally they say you can only have, let's say, four units per acre or something like that for. But if you're gonna add some affordable housing, we'll let you do eight units per acre, that's conditional unit.
Okay, that's a different, oh, different concept than what's, right, special exception is it's. If you do something for the town, or fulfill a need of the town.
Right.
Um, then you get bonus.
Well, yes, it's, it's, it's some discretionary decision-making, either, either here, conditional use or zoning board's discretionary, that it's up to the Z B A to determine if that's appropriate. Right, I mean, it may not be appropriate.
Yes, yes.
Like I said, the, the example from con, uh, special exception is the agricultural use. You can come in and say, I live in the R one and I've got, I've got a nice spot for horses, I've got, I've got three acres. There's a nice little pasture down there.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, it's not allowed by right, but I can get a special exception.
Right.
So the zoning board can say, yeah, you're right, that, that's worthy of horses on that.
The horse, the horse farm on West Scott Road would be a special exception.
Right.
Granted, it's a special exception.
But on, uh, on May Street, somebody's sitting on a third of an acre, they should, but they probably shouldn't have horses, it's not, it's not a big enough piece of land. You know, they're gonna have manure problems and.
Ten years ago, fifteen years ago, now probably my neighbor's got a special exception to have pigs next door to me.
Really? Ryan Alesworth got it for his horses on.
Ryan got it for his horses, that's in the R one.
But he had.
Yeah, but what Rob was talking about was the developer wanting. Well, if the developer did tax, he got why.
Yeah, that's a, yeah, right. That's, that's tax policy.
I don't think we should try to play that.
No.
Yeah, yeah, cause then, cause there will always be a couple. You know, I shouldn't say always, but the developers will start playing that game and then, and we say no, and we're going to court to. Fight our side of the argument and just.
Um, it's not our party.
Yeah, 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 I. It's like I wanna build, I'll put an extra apartment in, I'm gonna call them affordable.
Right.
Because it's gonna be less, charge less than the other apartments.
Right.
But is it really, you know, we say, well, it's not really affordable, cause you're still charging X amount of dollars.
Well, even affordable is.
To whom? Yeah, affordable to whom?
Yeah, who's gonna afford it?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Right.
And then, yeah. Yeah, I just, I just say it's a headache for us.
I know it's aspirational, but we should be trying to brighten it, doesn't need that.
Right. Yes, exactly.
Like that's gonna be our aspirational goal.
Right, exactly.
One of the things that we did talk about at the, um, conference that we went to was called perpetual affordability. And by that, what they were talking about is if the town grants a developer, you know, let's say ten units. And two of them have to be affordable. As defined by, you know, federal or state statute, X percentage of your income. That number would change as the median income changed up or down. And it would have to be, um, essentially in the deed. That, you know, two apartments are perpetually at thirty percent of the median income for the town.
And I think there also can be written into that a time limit of ten years or twenty years, and then after that it doesn't.
Yeah.
Well, there's.
But, but, but the idea, you know, would be to keep it affordable forever.
Right.
So that the town maintains a certain percentage of its housing stock.
Just so we're into the, the problem of enforcement.
Right, well, the other issue, cause it just came in, cause I read, I read one of the, one of the zoning things at some place in southern New Hampshire. Was a developer came in and said he was going to, he, it was a two-hundred-and-fifty unit development. He was going to make forty of them affordable.
Mm-hmm.
The forty, the forty affordables were gonna be in one building.
I remember reading that.
And the zoning board came back and said you have to build it to the same standard as the other units. Because no place does it say.
Yeah.
That I have to build the same thing, to the same standard.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
In order to get that affordability piece. And they were saying, you know, cause he wa, he, he was getting the exit, extra density.
Yeah.
Because he was doing forty, forty affordable units.
Something that have to cost, uh.
Exactly.
High-end appliances versus basic.
Right, or.
So we, we don't wanna get in.
We don't wanna get into that, well, that's what I mean, we don't wanna get into tax policy.
But I tell you how it, how it can play out, because I have a family member who's, who's taking advantage of the very kinda thing, it's in Vermont. What happens is, um, an entity like Twin Pines.
Yeah.
Housing Trust, um, or any other trust that can do this. Um, they will acquire a property in various means that they might acquire the property. Generally involves either some grant funds or, uh, uh, contributions, donations, that sort of thing. Or a tax sale of a property.
Mm-hmm.
It's transferred to the entity controlling the thing, and then they will turn around and, and set up a, a system where they, they sell it to the individual. Who meets certain criteria.